Okay, we are recording.
Very good. So do we want to bring the meeting to order?
Sure. Mike, do you want to bring the meeting to order and do a roll call and then we can get started?
Sure. Why don't we call the meeting to order and why don't we have Lori, you start and then we'll go to, we'll go with Lori then Carly then me and maybe Mike if he's off for one second.
Sorry, I just, I was talking to myself with the mute button up.
It's fine.
That's good Judy, thanks. Let's do that. Go ahead. So Board of Education Roles and Responsibility Meeting, calling to order, being presented by Nick Caruso. We'll go around the room for attendance. Lori Blake.
Hey, hi, I'm Lori Blake from Andover, Connecticut.
Carrie?
Hi, I'm Carrie Fralino from Marlboro, Connecticut.
Thank you. Judy?
Judy Benson Clerk Marlboro.
Mike Morris from Hebron. Scott?
Scott Leslie Acting Superintendent.
And Nick?
Nick Caruso from CAPE.
I think that's everybody. Did anybody not that jumped on that I missed?
Nope, that's who we have right now.
Okay, if not, then I'll hand this over to Scott and Nick to go ahead and move forward with the training.
Great. Well, Nick, once again, thank you for joining us and providing this training. And as we mentioned, we're recording the meeting, so we'll be able to share it with anyone that may not be able to make it tonight.
Terrific. Thank you. Well, I want to tell you, I'm glad to be back. This is actually my 12th visit to Region 8. First one was 2004, so I've had an opportunity to work with your district quite a while. I guess I'd like to have everybody jump in for a second and maybe Carrie, since you're in the upper right-hand corner on my screen, I'll start with you. And I'm just curious, one, how long you've been on the board? Two, why you decided to run for the board? And then three, what you hope you're going to learn tonight?
Hi, I am actually very new to the board. I was elected in November. The reason I chose to run was my husband and I recently started getting involved with town politics. My son is going to be moving up to Ram Middle School next year and I wanted to get much more involved. So after realizing there were openings, it seemed like a very good fit for me. I was very lucky in, I think it was December, I attended a full day CAPE session in Rocky Hill, which I enjoyed very much. So in terms of what I, I'm not really sure. I feel like it's going to be an overview of what I learned, the highlights of what I learned in Rocky Hill, which is great to have the reinforcement.
Terrific. I'm going to throw some new things at you too. So I think everybody will get something out of it. Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, so I'm a relatively new board member, just about a little less than a year. I got involved primarily frankly because Vin Colono, who was a previous board member who passed away while in office, was a very good friend of mine. And I was always very impressed with his passion for serving the school. And you know, his last role was being a board member here. I'm pretty familiar with what his, his views are and what he wanted to see come out of his time as a board member. I felt like maybe I could pick up where he left off and carry that out to the best of my ability. And then the second part of it is I have two kids in the middle school and high school system. And I also felt somewhat of a responsibility to get involved to, you know, try to make that the best experience for them as well as all the other kids and the staff. And as far as what I want to get out of tonight, honestly, I want to make sure that I understand any of the nuances or the rules that might not be something that's so, you know, jump out at you as required. And then the also, the other part of it is just maybe glean from this, maybe some of the things that I should pay more attention to as part of my responsibilities.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. Lori?
Hello. So I was elected in June of 2020 onto the board. I am one of two Andover reps. So we're the small, you know, the smallest of the three towns that represent Region 8. So it's been about a year and a half and sort of piggybacking off of what I want to get out of it. I know instead of, you know, connecting that together, you know, I feel like I have a good grasp of what our roles and responsibilities are, but I also feel that there's a lot that I am not aware of, that I'm unaware of. And so hoping to get some clear information on things that maybe we don't really touch upon or talk about on a more regular basis. I flipped through the big book numerous times on various occasions. But you know, anytime you can actually have a conversation and listen to things for me, it sets it in stone a little bit better. So that's what I'm hoping to get out of, out of tonight. As far as why I joined the board. So for a couple of reasons, personally, like everyone else, I have an eighth grader currently and my little guy's in grade five. So when I joined the board, we were just becoming part of the RAM community. But I'm an active member within my community and I volunteered on numerous organizations for years and years since I was an undergrad. And so I really believe in investing in your community and wanted to, you know, to give back to this one in particular, now that we were directly in it. And it makes me feel, gives me some, you know, solace knowing sort of a little bit more details about where my children are every day. So you know, personally, that's where I'm at. Professionally, I am in the larger education field and so I have a drive to learn more and know more about all things education. So that's why I'm here.
Terrific. Thank you. Judy?
Sure. Well, good evening, everyone. So I have been on the board for over 10 years. I have a college sophomore and a college senior, both of whom are doing exceptionally well. And I really think in large part it's due to growing up in the community with really caring teachers and coaches and just everybody. So you know, and I know it works. I know the RAM education works. So I think I wanted to kind of give back. I don't have my kids there, but I want every child to have that excellent education my own children had. The reason I ran again is I'm not sure I would have if it hadn't been for COVID and so many people stepping down from the board, but I really feel kind of a calling to get closer to where things are happening again. Like, you know, during COVID, one of, one of my good friends went back into the military after nine 11. And for me to a degree, COVID is, not that I can compare the two, but it's just this time, we don't know how to handle, what to do. And I'm just hoping that maybe I can be part of a team of where we challenge each other, support each other and think about it. And then on the experience front, I, as a school administrator, I sat at a board meeting, good Lord, since the late 1990s. But it wasn't a regional board and it was just so different. I had such a learning curve getting onto a regional board, even though I participated in board meetings for years. I felt like maybe that, that I could, you know, be a little bit helpful to some of the newer members or I hope that. And what I hope we get out of tonight is I really hope that we can support each other and honor each other and, and value each other. I just, I think that's everything. And I've, I've shared with a few people, but you know, a few of us have gotten through really difficult times while on the Board of Education. And someone who's no longer is on the board at one point, you know, said to me, well, well, it's like we're, we're a business. We're not friends with each other. And I don't know, I know I'm ridiculously too far one way, but I just hope that we can all support and care about each other as people and become the best board members and help our communities and everybody the absolute best way possible.
Thank you.
Great. And Nick, we have a new board member that joined us, Jessica Dapsis. She's actually not a new board member, but new for this evening. Jessica Dapsis from Hebron just joined us as well.
Great. Well, Jessica, you're just in time because it's your turn to introduce yourself. Share with us how, well, how one, how long you've been on the board, but also why you decided to run for the board? And then hopefully what you would like to hear tonight? What do you want to get out of this evening?
Yeah, sure. I think, oh, good God, I can't remember how long I've been on the board. I think it's been two years now. And I joined the board because I've had two children in town and the school system. And what the school has given to my children, the skills, the life skills that they need for later in life has been so valuable to me that I thought that I need to kind of give back to, back to the education system too. They have an amazing town and our school system is really kind of one of the shining pieces of it. I want to do what I could do to support that.
Thank you. And what you hope you'll pick up tonight?
Oh, yeah. You know what? I don't know. I think just to kind of learn some more of the ground rules, I think that's always important. And I think just, you know, us meeting as a group too, I think is important for all of us to do this together. I do, I do want to just say I am going to be driving. I just had to drop my son off at college, so I might not be able to go on and off of mute. So I apologize if there's something that I can't necessarily participate in.
Jess, I, I shared with everybody what happened at WPI. Jessica, Jess and I both have children at WPI. Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know. I think, I think as a board, I hope in some way, shape or form, that kind of thing comes up, Nick, how we can support our teachers, our administrators, our parents, our kids, just because this is such a unique, unique time and I worry about everybody.
Definitely. Just made a note. Thank you. Scott, do you want to add anything? You know, why, why are you doing what you're doing? It's, it's as much a commitment as a school board member, actually far more. Plus you had to really work to get here. And what do you hope you'll hear tonight?
Well, and, and thank you. And first I have to say how much I appreciate what we've heard from each of the board members. Cause you know, as, as a long-term staff member within the district and you know, someone who's worked so hard with the team at RAM and to hear, hear our parents coming back to us saying that, you know, they, they feel like they want to give back. I mean, there's no greater satisfaction than hearing that kind of feedback, not only, you know, the thank you, but giving back in terms of becoming a board member, because that, that certainly is an amazing commitment. You know, I think for me, you know, my, my two years as superintendent has been so utterly unique in that it really has been COVID. I mean, that, I hate to say it, but you know, that's, that's most of my discussions with the board members have been at least COVID related. You know, if it wasn't about COVID itself and the mitigation efforts we were putting in place, I was talking about the impact that it might have had on the school and why we're doing some things differently. And, and I really welcome this opportunity for the board members to talk about things outside of the realm of COVID. Because you know, I'm afraid that once everything is, is, you know, we're back and of course, we're all hoping that, that back to normal happens next week. But, but I think we can all be pretty sure that it's, you know, next year when the new superintendent takes, takes their seat, that, you know, we will be back to normal and the board can begin to start expanding, you know, the discussions that unfortunately have been a bit hampered. I don't want to say that they've been non-existent because this board is really very, very active and we've, we've done some great things. But you know, I'm really looking, you know, for, for this as one of those steps to getting fully back to normal. And so the board can address those learning issues outside of the realm of, that four-letter word I won't even mention for the rest of the night. So.
Well, it's interesting that the, what you hear from board members and superintendents is like, is I never signed up for this. Because you're all here because education's important and COVID seems to be the antithesis of education. There's a periodical called School Administrator Magazine, the National Association prints it. And I contribute to it periodically with a column. And I've noticed the last, for the last year or so, like a lot of organizations, you know, the back page was always, or the second to the last page was usually about one column inch of, you know, all the new superintendents that have been hired across the country, those that have retired, those that have passed on, unfortunately. Typically you might have maybe one or two inches of column space for each of those. But for the last year or so, it seems like the retirement section has been over a page. It's, it's really beaten up superintendents along the way in particular, but board members too. And you know, it's, it's just been a challenge for people who have dedicated their lives to helping children. We're not spending a lot of time on the things that really give us all that passion and all that excitement and, and concern. So, but we could talk a little bit about how maybe to try to get the focus back where it needs to be. Because right now COVID's setting the agenda and we have to kind of figure out how we take that agenda back. So some of you, if you went to that new board member thing, you might know the answer to this. But how many school board members does it take to screw in a light bulb? No?
Can I just say, Nick, that according to our maintenance contract, the board of ed members would be prohibited from screwing in light bulbs because they're not a member of the consensual union. You get any ideas the next time you're re-.
That's awesome. I'm going to remember that. But actually, the correct answer is none. It's up to the board to say, let there be light. The board is the visionary organization. You work on strategic planning or goals. The very least, you're using your policies to establish your expectations of the district. That's where the, that's the domain of the board. It isn't to screwing in light bulbs or even counting light bulbs. But to really sort of set the direction, what is it we're looking for? What is it that we want the kids to succeed at? And then it's the superintendent's job to sort of figure out, are we going to use incandescent fluorescent candle, et cetera? And to designate the appropriate staff person to actually screw in the light bulb, in this case, make sure it's a union employee. But the reason that's important is, and it was obvious to me one night, I was actually doing this presentation for another school district and they're a very small district. And, and while we were in the midst of this workshop, I noticed the superintendent had a legal pad. She was just writing feverishly through the whole meeting. And I finally, curiosity got the best of me. I was, what are you doing? And she goes, I'm taking the minutes. So the first thing I would say is we don't really need minutes for a meeting like this, other than the meeting came to order at six o'clock. It adjourned at, you know, seven 35 or eight o'clock or whatever. And that's really all minutes have to reflect is actions of the board. But I was grateful I didn't have to bring it up. One of the board members literally stood up, pointed at the superintendent, go, she's screwing in a light bulb. And it, I felt good that night because somebody was paying attention. The, the superintendent of schools is your chief executive officer. You know, that is a very important position, as much a part of the leadership team as the board and needs to be fully engaged in the meeting. And I know when I'm in meetings where someone says, who's going to take the minutes? I hide. Because, well, one, I can't read my own handwriting and the minutes, minutes always come out terrible. But secondly, you can't be engaged in what's going on in the meeting when you're doing that. Because you're focusing on listening and writing, but you're not really focused on, on the impact or what it means or thinking through solutions. And I want my CEO doing that. I want my CEO fully engaged in the meeting. So part of your job as a board is to provide the supports necessary to make sure the work's getting done appropriately. Like who's the right person screwing in the light bulb? And you know, I had a very interesting lesson. When I got out of college, I worked in a music store for a few years. And the store manager made a big point once in a while of if he saw a scrap of paper on the floor, he didn't order someone else to pick it up. Certainly would have been within his rights, but he always made a big production of, I'm going to bend over and I'm going to pick it up because it's all of our responsibility. And that sets such an example for me that I still to this day remember, you know, it's, you're, just because you have comma boss after your name doesn't necessarily mean you're not going to do what you need to do. But at the same time, part of our job is to make sure that we're doing the work that we need to do and not work that someone else can do. So there's a balancing act, but part of your job as a board is to make sure the superintendent has the appropriate tools or resources to do the job he needs to do and likewise his staff. And finally, it's the board's responsibility and you don't do that in a vacuum, but to understand what's going on in terms of lighting, what is the quality of lighting? How are we evaluating that? Do we spend time in our board meetings talking about student achievement? That's the work of the district. That's what we are, that's why we're here, is to improve teaching and learning so that children can learn more. So do we spend time at our meetings discussing that, learning about it, understanding where we are and what we need to do? Too many boards, I'll ask boards all the time, how much time in your meetings do you spend on student achievement? And the usual answer is not enough. It could be two hours, four hours, but it's always not enough. And so how do we redirect our attention to the work that is most important? And some, I hope along the way this evening, we'll get to some of that. So an interesting factoid for especially you new folks, there's 1,412 little smiley faces on this screen and they represent the children in that middle school, high school. Those are the kids whose entire future, I don't want to make you feel overwhelmed, but their entire future depends on what you do. And I, I mean that seriously because we know there's plenty of evidence that shows that a child has a much greater chance of success at life if they've had success in school. And for those kids that don't, that aren't successful, there used to be an opportunity for children that maybe didn't get to go to college or could look at other types of careers, could get by with maybe a high school education and maybe a minimal high school education, but not anymore. Those jobs really don't exist in all, in any kind of numbers. So each and every kid has to be successful. And, and with what we now know about how brains function, we know more about how memories are created and retained in terms of science and chemistry and stuff, we should be doing better. And so I just want you to always be thinking about these little smiley faces. Numbers are deceiving. Percentages are deceiving. 80% of our kids pass this or master this. 90% of our kids did this. But when you have 1,400 kids, that 10% means there's still 140 kids that maybe didn't get where they had to go. And each and every one of them is critical to the success of our, your community, our state, our country. And so I want you to always remember these kids. I also, just to put it in kind of perspective, if you total up the region, there's 2,700 kids that are all going to be, either are or going to be in your school. And that's just this year. And every year, a like number of children are going to come in and fill your hallways. And so the decisions you're making aren't just for today, aren't just for tomorrow, but you're making decisions that will impact a generation of children. That, you know, a new math curriculum might take a year or two just to implement and get it set up and on, you know, on, in gear. You know, the teacher's getting the right PD to be effective at teaching that new curriculum. All of those things take time. So your decisions aren't immediate necessarily. They don't show immediate results and they impact forever. So again, just something to think about as you go about your work. Whole lot of responsibility just got dumped on your shoulders, but I think it's important to never forget why you're there. A couple of things I'd just like to share to get us thinking and, and give us some, some ideas to help put you, put things in perspective for you. I'd like to talk about the Eisenhower matrix a little bit and the idea that something's either important or unimportant or urgent or not urgent, that we can sort of quantify or qualify various things that we are presented with every day. Your superintendent certainly is, you know, in fact, because of COVID, talk about changing life, with COVID, everything's important and everything's urgent. And in, in normal times, I would say that's the category that your superintendent is going to, that's the domain your superintendent spends most of his time. It's urgent and it's important and it's more tactical rather than strategic. So it's dealing with something that we have to do right away and it's hands-on. And that really typically is the domain of the superintendent. If we get into things that are important but not urgent, that's when we're talking more strategically. That's where we're planning. That's where we're looking down the road, strategic planning, goal-setting, policy. Again, we use our policy to express where we want to go. And that tends to be the domain of the board. And again, not exclusively, you certainly work with your superintendent and get feedback and input from staff to make that happen. In the past, if it was unimportant and urgent, sometimes it got done anyway, just because that's how we've always done it. That's a phrase that I hear an awful lot when I ask boards, why do you do that? Well, we've always done that. And, and sometimes we want to spend more time talking about the important stuff. We have to figure out how to let go of some of the other stuff along the way. And that's a planning process that we do with agendas and looking at various things. But, and in the past, maybe you could get away with eliminating something if it fell into that fourth quadrant, but not always unfortunately. Well, now with COVID, it got really messy really quickly. And again, everything your superintendent's dealing with is urgent and, and important. And more importantly, it's chaotic because directives are coming fast and furious even now. Although hopefully it's, you know, we can plan a couple of weeks ahead, but not even. But for that first year, there were executive orders coming out once a week. And every week on Thursday night, that'd be the executive order. And on Friday, that'd be the retraction and/or correction and/or adjustment. Because, you know, again, they're doing the best they can. But as they make a declaration, all of the, oh yeah, but did you think of this comes out? And they hadn't. And so they had to make a lot of corrections. But even like two weeks before that school year started last year, you know, they were saying, you know, basically have three plans. We don't know which one you're going to use, but you have to have three plans. And that's after spending the summer drafting plan after plan after plan. So, and we all know what plans do. Once everything starts flying, unfortunately, it gets very difficult to follow through on those plans. But it's important to acknowledge that your superintendent is focused on things that are often immediate and doesn't have the luxury of thinking through things to the point where we'd all be more comfortable. And it really means the board's role has changed somewhat, at least for now, that instead of directing the superintendent and directing the staff through policy, it really, you're almost having to become a support system for them. You know, what have you had to do this week? What do you need from us to make that happen? So it's more of a supporting role and helping to make sure that these things get done appropriately. And, and as the slide kind of shows, you really have to learn to get rid of stuff that is not going to, you know, either put it off a year or two, you know what, we can refocus on that after COVID. We can refocus on that after we've developed remediation plans, because a lot of the kids that we have in the building right now have had less than what we would have hoped for them in terms of their ability to learn. We've got to make sure as best we can that when those kids finally do leave the school, and some of them are seniors, so we don't have a lot of time, that we've tried to catch them up as best we can. And as somebody mentioned the other night, when I was having this conversation or this presentation, I guess, they said, yeah, but remember, all of the changes we're going through here at our school is happening in higher ed too. So it's not going to be normal for them. You know, my initial thought was we have to have the kids as prepared for college as possible. Well, college is dealing with the same thing. So we're all in this boat, but we need to focus on that stuff. Finally, a quote from the Marquis de Lafayette, which I picked up from a book called School Board Leadership in America. The book was written in 1958. Ed Tuttle was the first executive director of the National School Boards Association. And I bought this on Amazon as, almost as a joke a couple of years ago for like three bucks used. And it's actually a pretty interesting book, because a lot of the things they were wrestling with in 1958, they haven't figured out yet and we're still wrestling with them. It kind of put perspective on the idea, many people run for school board because they figure, I got to change things. I want to cause things to speed up, change, get better. And we forget sometimes just how long it takes to, to move a super tanker in a different direction. And that's really kind of what we have. COVID has caused us to do a lot of things quickly. Not always in the best, for the best way of doing it, but certainly we've all done as we can to make things happen. But I read, I study, I examine, I listen, I reflect. And out of all this, I try to form an idea into which I put as much common sense as I can. I love that as a decision-making model. You know, we know the human brain, the part that analyzes data is different than the part of the brain that says yes or no. The part of the brain that makes decisions is not really directly connected to the part of the brain that looks at data. So, you know, we could either bury ourselves in, you know, data fatigue, basically, just keep worrying away at it, looking at more and more and refusing to make a decision. Or some of us, and I probably fall into that category more than others, Or some of us, and I probably fall into that category more than others, hey, it feels right, I think I'm ready to vote. Well, we're not there yet, you know, but, so there's, there's a difference between board members, there's a difference between mindsets. And part of working together is sort of getting the sense of, of, okay, I could be comfortable with people looking at information differently than I can, coming to different conclusions than I can, but I can respect how they came to that conclusion. And I'm gonna support or respect their decision whether we agree or not. And I think that's really important. The other thing I'd mention is that common sense is really important. It's one thing to pass directives, I wish the legislature thought of this more often, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. But there are consequences to every decision we make. And when we make a policy decision or we pass something as a board, there are going to be ramifications to it. And your superintendent has to be able to take your ideas and make them work and make them happen. And so, you know, you can have a lawyer write a policy, for example, and it will meet all the legal requirements for that policy. But a superintendent, for example, is gonna say, well, yeah, that, that tells me what I have to do, but it doesn't give me guidance, it doesn't help me make that happen. So you want to be thinking about the common sense as much as you do about what you're actually trying to do. Now, I have to hope. All right, so now what I have to do is stop sharing and then reshare. Because I think this is the one we want right here. Good, all right. So what I want to do, and even those of you who are seasoned, and, and frankly, even except for Judy, the most seasoned, they're only a couple of years. So there's a possibility some of this stuff you might not have heard before. I think I was back there in twenty nineteen to do my last, nope, last roles was in, yeah, in twenty nineteen, so it's been a while. But what I did, when I became a board member, I didn't spend a lot of time looking at laws that govern school boards. I only started doing that when I started working with Boards of Ed. And I thought it might be important for me to understand the legal obligations of the board. And as I was going through, the, the state publishes a book every couple of years that gives all education law in the state, at least as far as the state laws go, and it's about four hundred and fifty pages long. And as I was reading through that book and picking out things I thought were important to, to share with boards, I realized that this stuff would have really helped me when I was a board member. And I'd wished I'd known it thirty-eight years ago. Because I started my board service in nineteen eighty-three, served on the Bloomfield Board for ten years. And then in ninety-three, switched jobs a couple of times, but ended up at Cabe. So this is my twenty-eighth year of working with boards. And I still learn stuff every time. So those of you who think this is the answer to all of your concerns, I'm sorry to tell you, there's more to learn. But I did, I do want to share with you some things that I think are critical for board members to understand. Starting with the state constitution. And because their laws and words matter, I'm gonna commit one of the worst crimes a presenter, a presenter can do, and that's called death by PowerPoint. I'm gonna read these things, but I think the words are important. And, and there may be people listening because it's a live call that may need to hear it anyway. So the, the constitution says there shall always be free public elementary and secondary schools in the state. The General Assembly shall implement this principle by appropriate legislation. Now, there's a couple of things that stood out in my mind. I'm gonna ask folks if they see anything here that might be important to discern from this, this language. Anything stick out in your minds? Okay, well, it's, it's early. Well, I want to start with, it's, it's a function of state government. Free public schools is a function of state government. When they debated the federal constitution, they discussed education. Jefferson and Adams, I know, wrote extensively about the importance of education to a well-rounded democratic society. Of course, their idea of well-rounded democratic society only affected about ten percent of the people in their charge. The expectation, in fact, Jefferson said that the purpose of public schools was to separate the genius from the rubbish. Those were his words. And then they would give a world-class education to the ten percent, maybe that were going to run the farms, run the estates, run the factories, what little industry they had back then. And everybody else was worker bee, and you didn't need to have that deep an education. So there, we can tell that they decided purposefully that this should be a function of the state. They discussed whether it should be a national issue, and they said, nope, that's up to the state. So each state has some language that says what they believe should happen in their state. And in this case, you're charged with having free, well, actually, the General Assembly is charged with having free public schools. The General Assembly is, because it's a function of the state, they're actually responsible for providing that free public school. The legislature passed a statute, and this is actually several pages long. I'm just gonna share with you the first paragraph because I think it's the most important language. And it, like anything, even a box of cereal, you put things in the order of importance. You know, what's the most important? Well, if it's Cheerios, it's oats, so that goes first. And then you work your way down to all the chemicals, preservatives, and sugar. But in this case, the statute says, "Each local or regional board of education shall maintain good public elementary and secondary schools, implement the educational interests of the state as defined in section ten-four A." We'll, we'll share what that means. "And provide such other educational activities as in its judgment will best serve the interests of the school district." Now, the first time I saw this, I had one of those aha moments. And again, I'd been a board member for ten years and never really thought about what the state expected of us. But it starts with that first obligation, maintain good public elementary and secondary schools. It doesn't matter why you ran for the school board. The state, in the state's eyes, you are charged with maintaining good public elementary and secondary schools. Now that, you might disagree on what good means. And that, and there are, that is where a lot of boards spend time challenging each other, is what does good mean? But there's no argument, that's what the state expects of you. Secondly, implement the educational interests of the state. You are a state agency. You answer to the state legislature, you answer to the Commissioner of Education and the State Board of Education. They have authority over what you do and what your school district does. And so while you're elected locally, and I don't want to tell you that you can ignore your municipalities that put you where you are, the reality is that the expectations of you sometimes conflict with what your communities are expecting of you. And because you are that state agency required to implement the interests of the state, sometimes you're drawn into conflict with your community members. And this is why serving on a school board can sometimes be less than fun. Because people have expectations of you that may be unrealistic, given what the state expects you to do. And so, well, and we'll talk a little bit as we go along about what some of those may look like. And then finally, you have to provide such other activities as in your judgment best serve the interests of the school district. And when I say your, I mean the board. There's a corporate entity known as the Regenate Board of Education. And your board has legal authority to do things in legally called and, and noticed meetings through votes. That is how you use your authority as board members, is to vote in meetings. And it's the consensus of the board, it's the vote of the board that actually has the weight of law or the weight of governance. You individually do not have authority to wander around the school and give orders or directives or go on fact-finding missions. You have no other authority outside of your meetings than any other member of the public. And I'm sure you have rules about, somebody else can't just waltz into the building without signing in, checking in, being checked to make sure that they're, they have a legitimate reason for being there. The same actually applies for board members. And sometimes we forget about that because people are gonna often defer to a board member because, oh, they're a board member, I've got to be careful, I work for them. And so it, it can be a little dicey on occasion. You don't want to be that board member that everybody runs when they see you heading into the building. You want to be the one that they're glad to talk to. The other reason I think this is important, because there may be, you know, it's a little different with the regional district because there's less connection between the local municipal governments. You know, if you were on a board in one of your three elementary districts, there's a, probably a tighter connection between the finance board, the boards of selectmen. And they may be more inclined to say, we don't want you to do this, or we want you to do that instead. The statute gives you the authority that you, and you provide the opportunities that in your judgment are gonna serve the interests of the district. So this language is probably less critical, but it's still important to know. Because your three towns could gang up on you, I suppose, and say, we want you to do such and such. Those educational interests of the state, I want to go through them very quickly. First one, actually, it's two words, equal opportunity. You have to provide equal opportunity for children to receive suitable programs of educational experiences. In other words, these are mirrored in things like state law, federal law, special education, handicapped accessibility, even to distribution of resources to make sure that every child has equal access or equal opportunity to be successful. And that is an expectation of the state, that children are going to have opportunities. And equity is, is an important part of that discussion. Secondly, this part is really kind of broken. And I, I do want to share with you a few of the reasons why funding for public schools is as broken as it is. But there is an expectation about minimum expenditure requirements, that we can't spend less than we did the, the year before. There are getting to be more caveats and exemptions and changes. You know, if there's been a drop in student attendance, that might trigger something. But for the, the general purpose of understanding school finance, I just want to touch on a couple of things that I think you need to know. First one is that the funding structure is broken. That there was an expectation that, again, and this is an obligation of the state. Remember, the, the constitution gives the state government the responsibility of providing schools. But in Connecticut, we're very dependent on local property taxes to fund our schools. And that's part of the dilemma is, the state has been mandating more and more and more, and the expectations for boards of education have increased over and over and over again. Every year goes by with far, further examples of that. But the amount of money that the state has available or is willing to kick in is less and less and less. And so while your costs keep going up, the amount of resources available to you keep going down. In nineteen eighty-five, the legislature recognized that we weren't encouraging a lot of great teaching, our teachers into the teaching ranks. The statistic I remember hearing at the time was that about half teachers coming into education were coming in from the bottom third of graduating college classes. And that caused great concern. We weren't paying teachers nearly enough to encourage them to start a career in education. The legislature passed a law that dumped a lot of cash, a lot of money into the system. And what they told districts was, you can reopen your negotiations, you can raise your teacher salaries, and we will fund it. We're gonna make a long-term commitment to fund education on, at fifty percent of all education funding. That they would, on average, so Ram might get less than Bridgeport, for example, but the amount of money they would provide would be fifty percent of education funding. They never did. They rarely got close. I think at one point, they might have been in the mid to high forties. Right now, and I don't have a number to back this up, but my estimate is that it's probably in the mid thirties, maybe mid to high thirties percentage-wise. And everything's gone up appreciably since then. So what that means is you're caught between a very big rock and a very big hard place in terms of what we need to do, what is expected of us versus what is available to us to do that. And I know your community's well enough to know, there's not a huge amount of industry out there in your communities to generate business property taxes or business taxes. You're really dependent very much on residential taxpayers. And it's harder and harder to support the work you're trying to do when it's, when the system's really skewed against you. The other part of this that's important to understand is that you're, one of your biggest expenses in a line item outside of salaries and fringes is special education. The costs of doing business in special ed are pretty significant. I, in your district, it might be ten, fifteen, twenty percent, I don't know. I was in a district the other day, they were, I think they said it was thirty percent of their budget was tied up in special education. The fact is, it's a federally responsible program that doesn't give you latitude. The process by which children are identified, needs are provided, is all done through a very strict process that is done internally through staff and through advocates for parents. And the board doesn't get involved in that. And frankly, the district doesn't get involved in terms of getting to make a lot of choices. For new board members, you're gonna learn a lot of acronyms. If you don't know what a PPT or an IEP is, you're about to learn. Because children who have exceptional needs go through a planning and placement team process where a team of educators and the people supporting the children, the family, et cetera, meet, talk about the children's needs, and come up with an IEP, Individualized Education Plan. So this is all done formally, it's through a very serious legal process. And that process becomes the obligation of the school district. And you can't say it's too expensive, we can't do it. What you say is it's too expensive, looks like we're gonna have to cut something else in order to be able to pay for it. And so the, the reason this is a dilemma, this is part two of the promise that was unrealized. The federal government made a promise that they would fund forty percent of special education costs. That number has hovered in this five to ten percent range most of the time. I heard recently it might be as high as eighteen percent, but it's nowhere near high enough, given that in nineteen seventy-five or thereabouts, when they passed a law, there were far fewer numbers of children that had been identified or needed services. The legal process itself wasn't as costly as it is now because part of that law says that if a parent challenges their placement, then they get to challenge it in court and it becomes a legal process. And if they are, if they win in any part of their complaint, you pay all their legal costs. So there's some really good special ed attorneys that are out there supporting parents that know how to get at least one thing satisfied so that you will pay their legal costs too. And again, I hope in no way that this gives you the impression that I'm saying that this is a process that shouldn't exist because these kids need all we can do to help them. Goes back to the equal access, we have to help every child be successful. But the, the system has been stacked against running a school district. Because things happen throughout the year, families move, come and go throughout the year. Children with needs come in, we do the PPT, we develop the plan. It may cost us a hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars. And we haven't budgeted for that because our budget starts July first, they came in August thirty-first. That means that we are going to spend money that we've budgeted or planned for somebody else. And so it's gonna come out from somewhere else. And we'll talk a, a little bit more about that process in a bit because I, I want to focus a little bit on the word budget and what that means later. But my point here is basically that you're caught in a real dilemma. And when you go to, well, in your case, you go directly to the voters, I think, right? You don't go to individual towns, the towns have to vote collectively. But you present the budget to them as the Regenate Budget. People may say you're spending too much, or they may criticize you that you're wasting all this money. The reality is that you are, you are funding your needs as best as you can. The problem is not a spending problem, you are not blowing taxpayer money. The problem is you are trying to do, you're trying to drive a Cadillac on ethanol, not even regular gas, because we've taken the gas out and you're running on pure ethanol. It might not work all that well because we don't have enough resources to do the work. So we have to just approach our communities a little differently than sometimes, well, we're really sorry, we need to ask for five percent, but that's what we need. But to really try to make the case, this is what we're doing, this is why we need to do it, and this is why we need your support. But you're behind right from the beginning because the expectation is that, you know, we can't afford it. You are charged or obligated to provide opportunities for students to interact with students and teachers from other racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds. That was a result of Chef O'Neill. Although Chef versus O'Neill was Hartford specifically, the legislature understood this was a problem that was statewide and came up with language to try to get you to focus on it. You do have to have activities, you do have to report on them to the state every year. They'll obviously be different in your district than they might be in a town that's more contiguous to a, a district with a higher percentage of children with needs or such. And then finally, and this is the catch-all, you are obligated to adhere to all mandates. And mandate is the word that school board members hate the most, except maybe COVID. And mandate is the word that school board members hate the most, except maybe COVID. But anything that the legislature or the federal government requires of you in terms of services, reporting, professional development, whatever it might be, is a mandate. The word they left out of the man, this legislature, this legislation is unfunded. But that should have been, it is implied, and it certainly is practiced, they do not fund mandates. They will give you more and more and more to do, and they will give you less and less and less to do it. So again, but you don't have choices. You do not have the, you know, there are very few mandates where you can opt out or meet certain criteria and then be exempted from them. Most of them are, everybody's got to do it. And it's something that just, we have to get, we have to be used to that and be ready for it. But understand that it does impact how we can provide the services to our kids because these will take away from some of the things we think are important. Now, I mentioned before, you can disagree on what good means, and the legislature sort of understood that. So throughout the years, that four hundred and fifty book, a page book that I mentioned before, is full of places where the legislature tries to identify what good means. And so I've just pulled some of this language out to give you some ideas. You have to provide adequate books, supplies, materials, equipment, staffing, facilities, technology. You have to equitably allocate the resources. Now, when you're one school or a combined middle, high school, it might look differently than, for instance, in a larger elementary district where they've got two or three elementary schools, they might have to be very careful about how they balance the resources between all three schools. But you still have to make sure that you're providing equity in the different needs your kids have as you go along. And you have to provide a safe school setting. And obviously, we we know that. I would say that here again, the legislature has impacted your work more in a more challenging way because safe school setting no longer just means security. It no longer means just having a locked front door and, you know, a safe facility. But it also gets into a social emotional wellness, it gets into bullying and all of those things. Judy, you mentioned before about students who have just had enough and they've they've made some horrible life altering decisions. Some of that is an obligation of the school district to do what we can to to keep that from happening. That that is just as important to a safe school setting as is physically protecting them against somebody coming into the school and causing harm. And so those are things the legislature expects of you. They expect you to have, and there's a lot of pages of these laws, I just pulled a couple of them out. They also expect you to adhere to a lot of policies or to set policies. And actually, sometimes this is a legislative of priority of us because we hear them debating a new mandate. And so we will sometimes say, instead of mandating a behavior that may help your, you know, your constituent, but might impact a hundred and sixty other eight boards of education negatively, can you at least change it to require a policy? And that way, the local district can write a policy that will meet the expectation of what they're looking to do, but do it in a way that best affects the kids at your schools. Rather than, I'll give you an example that really hit home to me. I was working with the New Britain Board when this statute came out. But there was a mandate that said that, well, let me set it up. A statistic had come out that a very few districts had a disproportionately high number of expulsions per student. So in other words, for every thousand students, maybe they had thirty expulsions versus five. So the legislature was concerned, some districts might have been, well, we won't deal with that child, we won't try to help them, we're just going to kick them out. And so they decided they would pass a law that says you can't expel kids anymore, except for very specific reasons. And what, and so you'd have to change it to in school suspension and those types of things instead. What they didn't anticipate was that New Britain was the one that I remember. I was working with the board when this happened, they said, we need another one point two million dollars because we have to staff after school, in school suspensions, we don't have enough staff to do it. So we need all this money to budget to fund all this. Nobody anticipated that when they passed that law. So we'd rather see policies. And so, and you can look at the list here, discipline, homework attendance, promotion, retention, drugs, alcohol, use, suicide. There are serious issues and it's better if you could write policies that make sense for your district. By the way, the last one, reporting a bus complaint, is not call a local school board member and have them fix it for you. Although particularly in the elementary districts, but not exclusively, that is an expectation of your public. I'm going to call Mike and he's going to, you know, get my kid back on the bus. Well, you have to have a policy that discusses it, but it's administrative. All you're doing is giving guidance to the administration, and it's their job to make sure that a policy is adhered to. We could talk about superintendents for a minute. You are required to have a superintendent of schools. I remember one district that had gone through four superintendents in two years, I think it was. That included interims, but it was, they just kept chewing them up. And the board chair at one point says, we don't need to keep going through this, we're just going to do it ourselves. And the commissioner of education called him and said, you will hire a new superintendent or you're going to be in big trouble. Because again, it's part of the educational interest of state to have a chief executive officer. And as the statute says, has executive authority over the school, over the school system. The superintendent is your employee, it's the one person you really hire. I know in a lot of districts, and I think there's been some talk about principal. The board may have some part of the process, but it's really the superintendent should be hiring everybody else, and then you hire and evaluate the superintendent. That's the most important job a board does, I think. More importantly than creating a budget, more important than drafting policy, those are two other expectations. But the most important decision you will make as a board member is to hire a superintendent of schools because that person is going to have a profound impact on what happens in your school district. Everybody else gets evaluated, I want to start, you evaluate the superintendent. The the process has to be mutually determined and agreed upon. I know sometimes boards will say, yeah, we want, we're not happy with the way we do it, we want to change it. You can't do it unilaterally, superintendent must be part of that conversation. My own advice when we think about evaluation is, well, one, the purpose we all exist for is to make sure students are learning. So I would like to think that there's some component in evaluation, at least in the conversation, that deals with how are the kids doing in our district? Are children learning? Because that's why we're all here. On top of that, the purpose is for all of us to be successful. And so I know, having been through evaluations myself, where we had both superintendents that probably shouldn't have been superintendent, and we've also had great superintendents. We want to encourage the great ones by using evaluation to motivate them, help them get better, help them improve. And then some sadly, unfortunately, sometimes we're using evaluation to set the stage for what may have to come next. But in any case, it's important to remember, this is, the this, the purpose of all this is so that we are helping children learn better, that that is why everybody's doing their job. It's a superintendent's job to make sure everybody else gets evaluated. Board members do not see evaluations of teachers or administrators, they do not, they're not privy to that information. It's protected by law, first of all. But secondly, remember, you have no individual authority outside of your board meetings. And an important part of the role you play is a judicial one in some very serious things. The two that you may run into most often might be either termination or expulsion. Either taking away a teacher's job or removing a child from their constitutional right to free public education. Now, you will get, still be obligated to give them some sort of at home instruction or some sort of individualized instruction, you don't get scot free, get off scot free. But to remove them from school is a very serious legal process. And the expectation of the law is that if you were to make either of those two decisions, termination or expulsion, that you're going to make that decision based only on evidence presented in a formal hearing. That you cannot wander around the school, hey, tell me what's going on with that teacher. Or or worse, talking it up amongst parents or whatever. And I've seen that in in real life, we had a grievance hearing, slightly different expectation and very different legal process. But a grievance is when a teacher feels that the contract was not followed properly and they've been mistreated. I'll use that word. In this particular case, a teacher felt she deserved a better evaluation, she was given a satisfactory evaluation. Students that are teachers that she have mentored were getting excellent evaluations. And she felt if I can mentor excellent teachers, I must be excellent. Well, the fact is, in our contract and in most contracts, you cannot grieve, you cannot challenge an evaluation. So we planned on a five minute meeting, we were going to hear her complaint, we were going to say, this is not grievable. Let's have an adjournment because you can't grieve your evaluations. It was so pro forma, we didn't even have our attorney at the table. We didn't have our shipment and good one hired gun because we could save the three hundred and fifty bucks or whatever it was going to cost for her to drive out and sit for a few minutes and leave. So what happened kind of surprised all of us. The attorney representing the teacher got up and instead of saying, my client didn't like her evaluation, here's why we think that's wrong. He goes, Mr. Jones, pointed to one of the board members, is it true that you were in the supermarket? And you said this was the worst teacher your child ever had? And the board member kind of looked dumbfounded, goes, well, how did you hear that? And he goes, it doesn't matter how we heard it, is it true? And he goes, well, yeah, but how did you hear that? So we had to recess the meeting, get on the phone, our attorney was available, but we had to wait a half hour for her to come in. She was on the clock from the minute she left her front door. We had a five hour hearing. We had a five hour hearing because we had to ensure that teacher had every one of her rights protected in a formal legal process. Every I had to be dotted, every T had to be crossed. And again, because it was a very specific complaint that was not a part of the contract, we did come to the same exact resolution. But because of that one board's member in discretion, we had a five hour hearing at, I'm going to guess, time and a half. And so, and that wasn't even a termination or an expulsion. If that board member had been involved in either of those two, there would have been a lawsuit. And we probably would have lost. I would say that if you happen to know the neighbor's kid's a little monster, sets fire to your garbage cans every couple of weeks, and you walk into an expulsion hearing and you see that child at the table, the first thing you should do is address the chair and say, I have, I have a relationship with this, this person, I really cannot in good faith serve on this board, I need to recuse myself. It's always appropriate to do that, and you really should do that. Because if you don't, and somebody can show that you've had preconceived ideas or a very public, in some cases, acknowledgement of dislike or even the other way. I mean, you might, I found, because I grew up in Bloomfield and served on that board, a lot of the teachers we had to act on were former teachers of mine. And so I felt sometimes I had to recuse myself for the opposite reason. You know, I've got a vested interest in supporting this person, I don't think it's appropriate, and I would step back. And then finally, we realized some of those, like approving a leave of absence for illness didn't really mean anything because that was a recommendation of the superintendent and that was pro forma. It was okay to participate in something like that. But if it became a disciplinary matter, if it became something that they might gain some sort of benefit from it, that I should recuse myself, and I would suggest you would too. This one is my favorite statute, and it's one of two more that we're going to spend a little time on. It's important for you to really understand this. This is the part of the statute that talks about the word budget. And I'm going to mention this, I hope for the last time, that if you notice in the statute, the only place they actually use the word budget is in the title. The statute says, you shall prepare an itemized estimate of the cost of maintenance of public schools for the ensuing year and shall submit such estimate to the Board of Finance. And I realize in your case, it's a little different in terms of the process. But the money appropriated by any municipality for the maintenance of public schools shall be expended by and in the discretion of the Board of Education. The two words I want to start with that are really critical are itemized estimate. The reason I think that's important is we all have, we all have an idea when we hear the word budget. The word budget means we have a column here of what we want to spend. We have a column here, which is what we want to, what we are going to spend or what we have spent. And there better not be a column three with differences. Because if you did budgeting right, we did exactly what we said we were going to do. Well, in their infinite wisdom, and I am not saying this with any sarcasm attached, I really mean this, in their infinite wisdom, the legislature understood that that was impossible. That the way you fund public schools, you cannot spend, and remember, the superintendent's already, you know, in the throes of putting a budget together, probably started in November, working with staff to start putting numbers together. A process that starts in November and December, passes in May and doesn't become active till July. There's no way that you'll know where that money's going to be spent, just in the area of special ed. We've already talked about how that could impact. And COVID, you know, forget about all the things that you planned on spending and did not. So they got it, it's an estimate. Part of your challenge is to make sure that other members of your community understand that it's an estimate, that it's not a budget, that it is your best judgment on where you anticipate the money will go or should go based on your priorities. So talking about your priorities becomes important. If we, if this passes, here's the things we're going to implement this year that are going to make things better for our kids. Or here's the things that we are going to continue because they know that, we know they are successful. I'd suggest even the document that you send out to the towns says, itemized estimate of expenditures rather than budget. Or call it a spending plan, but don't call it a budget. Because you want to change that mindset of people that, well, you obviously did a terrible job because you didn't, you had a surplus or you didn't have a surplus. We caught heck one year when we came in with a one point two, out of a twenty, twenty-three million dollar budget, we came in with a one point two million dollar surplus because we figured out finally how to save money on it, on insurance. We got heck from our town council because you obviously did a terrible job of budgeting. No, we spent a year really trying to work to figure out how to conserve resources. And that's what your district does all the time. They're trying to figure out how to save money so they can use that money elsewhere. So that's part one of my sharing this. The other one is amongst yourselves. We used to fight tooth and nail over things, additions or changes to our budget. You know, I remember a famous argument we had where we were debating whether we should buy five horsepower or seven horsepower snow blowers. We had no business deciding whether we were buying snow blowers or not anyway. We should have said, there should have been a budget request or an itemized estimate expense request for X amount for snow removal, and then leave it to the discretion of central office to figure out how best to do that. Maybe if it's buying a vehicle, that gets to a point where maybe you have to have a little more direct decision making on how that fits into that estimate. But on things like that, it shouldn't matter. But if you think of this as an estimate, that today, July first, this is where this money would go if we could do it all. But we recognize that in September or October, you know, things might change. Or we had a resurgence of COVID in February. So we had to redistribute money from custodial to, or from educate, buses to custodial, for example. Because we ran fewer buses, but we had more, or we ran more buses because we had to have social distancing. All these things came into play over the last couple of years, which meant it was impossible to meet a budgetary obligation. The other part of this is that, you know, there may be a lot of people that want to tell you how to spend the money, but the obligation or the ability to appropriate that money is in the sole discretion of the Board of Education. You make those decisions directly, and there's a law that tells you you can. You have the right to transfer money. And in fact, I got caught my first year as a board member, the superintendent came to the board and said, we've had a couple of things in our budget this year, and he used the word budget. We had a flu epidemic, so we had more teachers out on sick leave, so we needed more substitutes. So we have to transfer some money from one account to the other to account for all these extra substitutes we had and extra snow removal. And I said, but you can't do that, it's a budget. So I even got caught up in the same lexicon of, you know, budget equals, we can't touch it. And it had to be explained to me, yes, we can, and here's a statute that allows us to do that. So you have that right. Most boards don't vote on transferring ten dollars, fifty dollars. There's usually a threshold in policy somewhere that says any amount up to a certain amount would be done administratively, maybe a report back to the board on where it is, or one big report that gets voted on at the end of the year. But it's, but you have to give some latitude to your central office. Last one, very important for you to know this stuff. You are obligated to, well, the district shall protect and hold harmless. You are obligated to, well, the district shall protect and hold harmless or save harmless any member of this board from any personal liability if the act of the board was not wanton, reckless or malicious and it was within the board statutory authority. In other words, the board made a decision. You terminated somebody, you added a program, you, whatever it might be. And somebody feels they were harmed by that decision and sues the district. I know as board chair, it was very disconcerting when a sheriff showed up at my front door one time with a summons and said, you're being served. And I freaked out, I had to call the superintendent, it's like, what do I do now? He goes, don't worry about it, the lawyer's already got it, we'll take care of it. But I was a little nervous. So if the boards, it was within the board's authority, you did everything by the book. There may be a lawsuit and the district may lose, but you are not going to individually have to come up with that settlement. That is done through the district. Typically, there's insurance to help defray that cost. But you're held harmless. But an example where a board may have exceeded its authority and did get sued. So a teacher was accused of doing something very serious to a student. The board was so incensed by the accusation that before the superintendent had done his investigation, the board terminated that employee. The person, because of the nature of that accusation, was devastated, had a nervous breakdown, could never teach in that field again. And I knew the family, sort of just as an aside, I didn't know them well. But I know that that person basically never had a life after that. He was just tarnished with this thing forever. Fast forward 20 years, the student recanted, said, that never really happened. I was going through some issues back then and I just thought I would get some attention. And the board that had made a decision without recommendation of the superintendent, without the investigation, outside of their statutory authority, got a big lawsuit. Now, because it was 20 years later, I don't think anybody on the board was still there. So the district still got that suit. But that's the kind of place where a board could conceivably be held personally accountable because you did exceed your authority and you did exceed the expectation. Also individually, there are times when you could get sued for doing something inappropriate. Like serving on a termination hearing when you very publicly have been bad mouthing that teacher. The teacher could say, I was terminated in part because a board member was prejudiced against me and they could sue. Or you could learn about something in executive session and then disclose it out to the public. And if that disclosure harmed another person, another teacher or a student, they could sue you. Those are examples of places where board members have been sued and sometimes board members have lost. So it is really important to understand that, you know, we have First Amendment rights. We're supposed to be able to say whatever we want. At least that's the expectation of First Amendment. But the First Amendment never says that you can say anything you want without repercussions. And there may be times when you are saying something that could cause repercussions. And even if you're not personally going to be held responsible, it still could set the district up to lose a lawsuit. And with, as you've been learning, it's so hard to get resources for the things we need to do. It's really terrible when we have to use some of those resources to do something that's totally outside of educating children because one of us did something wrong. So you want to be very careful. Those words wanton, reckless or malicious. If you deliberately cause harm to somebody, if you show either prejudice or favoritism, you know, superintendents could be accused of, you know, that person got the job instead of this one because they're friends or whatever. And so we're always under constant threat of, of somebody challenging us. You don't want to give them ammunition that they could use to harm you. Couple of other places you could conceivably be held individually responsible. One, if you deliberately overspend your budget, you could theoretically be held responsible for paying the difference between the original amount and what you went, you exceeded it by. I say theoretically because as far as I understand, it's never happened. There have been districts that ended the year with a deficit. The, I think part of it is the, the term willfully or deliberately. And secondly, that you have, most boards, and it might happen in May or June, or hopefully not June, because you need time to anticipate this stuff. But sometime around April, after we've made it through winter, we kind of have a better sense of where the problems lay during the winter. We've been through the flu, we've been through all these things. We now know that we're probably going to end the year, we're targeted to be $100,000 in the hole at the end of the year. It's your obligation to reach the end of the year without going over. So you would have to take into account anything that you haven't spent and start looking for ways of redistributing money to fill that hole. But ultimately, you may not have all of it. And then you go to the finance boards. And again, I'm not familiar with your exact process in the regional, but I assume you have to go to the three finance boards in some capacity and say, we've gone over, this is what it's going to cost for us to meet that obligation. If you can show good faith efforts to save the money and find it elsewhere, you can show a good, strong rationale for why you went over. The expectation is, and that's from the state government as well. Their expectation is that your communities will fund that difference. Our advice from our attorneys is you can never overspend it. If it means closing school early because you ran out of money, that's what you have to do. But, and that is perhaps the, the lever that you have with the finance people is, if we don't get this money to fill this hole, we have to shut down schools on May 15th. And again, hopefully it's not a confrontational process. It's not, you know, adversarial, we're, we're all in this together. We're doing the best we can, but here's something that happened, we, we could not anticipate. So that was one. The only other place you want to be careful is in freedom of information laws. There have been a couple of cases where the commission ruled against the board, where board members individually got fined because whatever they did was willful, deliberate and often repetitive. The commission is not concerned with catch, playing gotcha with the board. And, you know, gee, you went into executive session, you discussed an issue, you forgot to come back into public before you voted, so that vote was illegal. And, and technically it was an illegal vote because you have to vote in public. If it was, if it rose to the level of a commission complaint, the commission would say, okay, yes, you did it. It was unintentional, 10 o'clock at night, nobody thought to remember. You have to correct it by putting this on your next agenda and revoting it, for example. They will try to be prescriptive. They will help you resolve the problem because they're not trying to punish you. But there have been cases where the boards, perhaps it was refusing an FOI complaint that went to the board level. The commission ruled that the board had to meet that obligation. A second request came in, they refused to do it again. Third request came in, refused to do it again. And at that point, the commission says, you're not getting the message. The first time we allowed for an honest mistake. The second time, maybe you were just thinking we didn't mean it. But this time each board member is going to pay $250 in a fine. And that did happen in one district at least. So those are places where, I'm not trying to scare you, at least not a lot. But I do want you to be cognizant of the idea that words matter, intentions matter, and things that you do or say, even outside of a board meeting, could seriously impact what happens at the board table. Also remember, in terms of things like social media or even just public commenting, there are cameras on us all the time, there are recordings going on all the time. I know one board meeting recently, I talked to the board chair. He goes, we had a really serious confrontation on our board, board members weren't getting along. And it got so ugly that they recessed the meeting and everybody kind of went into their corners for five minutes to cool off. And while they were cooling off, the reporter walked up to the chair and said, so what the heck's going on? And the chair was probably a little more forthright than he should have been. Well, you know, they don't get along on this and there's, you know, these people are being a little stupid. I mean, he, he got very graphic or a little too graphic. What he didn't realize was that the reporter had set his phone down right on the table next to them and was recording the whole conversation, which showed up on a blog that night. Now, even if he had said everything factually, it doesn't mean as chair, when your job is to make sure everybody's working together, well, you've now alienated a bunch of your board members and that's going to make you a less effective chair. And it's going to further exacerbate the conflict, not help it go away. So examples of this are, they abound, you want to be very careful in saying things that you prob, if the little warning bell's going off saying, oh, I better not say anything, listen to that little warning bell because these things can bite you and they can be serious. Social media, the only other thing I guess I would add, there's a lot to be said with, you know, less is more when it comes to your comments on social media. We've learned over the last year or two that we are, we rarely will convince someone who has a different political philosophy than us, that we're really going to convince them that we're right and they're wrong. And using energy to do that does nothing but get us all frustrated. So getting in the middle of shouting matches, for lack of a better term, on Facebook or Twitter or whatever, doesn't make a lot of sense. And people could do a screenshot and then that's out there forever too. So every time you hit post, test, share, whatever, text, share, it can be shared and you want to just not be caught in that dilemma. The other thing I would say about social media that I think as a board should be important to you. When I was on the board, we didn't have social media. We barely had computers, we didn't have cell phones. I had a beeper, I was a plumbing contractor, so I had a beeper. And Judy, I see your hand up, we'll get to you in just a sec. So in the old days, let's say three o'clock on Friday afternoon, a kindergartner fell asleep on a school bus, driver didn't see it, got off the bus, locked up the bus and went home. By 3:30, they realized the child was missing, child was found, brought home, everybody's safe. The principal may call the superintendent Friday afternoon and say, look, we had a problem, kid fell asleep. Kid's home safe, everything's okay right now. And the superintendent more than likely would say, okay, well, look, on Monday, I'm going to come down there, you're going to come up here, let's talk about it. Let's figure out exactly what happened, see who's responsible and deal with it. So there'd be a careful, thoughtful investigation, followed by a careful, thoughtful decision based on the examination of this evidence. And by the time the reporter might call on Monday afternoon, gee, I heard something happened on Friday. Well, yep, student fell asleep on the bus. Student, we discovered it, student was found safe and sound, everything's fine. And we resolved it by firing the driver, whatever it might be. And so the article would basically just state facts. Well, nowadays, at 3:01, if it happened at three o'clock, at 3:01, everybody in the world knows that not only did the kid fall asleep on the bus, but the bus blew up going over the cliff. Because all this stuff gets exaggerated. Now, as a board member, you're going to get the question, what are you going to do about it or what's going on? And as a board member, while the conditions have changed, the immediacy of a response may have changed in terms of they don't give you till Monday afternoon to figure out what's happening. Your expectation should not change. I want the superintendent to work with his administrators, do a careful, thoughtful investigation and then come up with a decision that makes sense based on that investigation and then resolve the problem. That's what I want. I want my CEO to resolve the problem effectively. That will not, that will not happen nor should happen at 3:05. So our response when we hear this, and, and again, we might not, the superintendent might not even aware of it, be aware of it yet. Or what he heard was kid fell asleep, the driver was walking away, heard the kid crying or something or woke up, ran right back. It only took about a minute and everything's fine. But it snowballs out there. So the superintendent might say, this isn't worth notifying the board on because it's not that important. But by the time it hits social media, maybe he should have. So you need to know enough to say, I know the superintendent's aware of it. He's dealing with it, everything's fine, kids are safe, et cetera. We'll have some sort of announcement or something. It will be posted somewhere once there's a resolution. But right now, your immediate concern is okay. You know, your immediate concern is, is fixed or whatever. I think that's an important response to think about having the back of your mind at any time. Because you don't want to change the outcomes that you would have expected before. This is all speeded up. And remember the other thing, in sites where, you know, there's always a, I hate the Regentate Public Schools. There's a site, I love the Regentate Public Schools. So the people who congregate either of those groups are of a like mind. So people who go to the site that can't stand you, all can't stand you. Rarely does a person go, gee, I really don't know what's going on in RAM. I think I'll go to that site and get an objective idea on what's going on. They're going to learn pretty quickly that that doesn't exist in that site. So expending tons of energy to resolve something that's coming out there probably isn't going to change many people's minds. We want to better use that time to more effectively communicate to the public that doesn't have an opinion or doesn't, you know, we want to change minds or influence minds to understand the good that's going on in the schools. Having some sort of communications plan is probably a good idea. Maybe a bylaw on the policy or even a policy on communications makes sense. Who's going to be the spokesperson for the board? Typically, it's the board chair or the superintendent. Maybe you have a communications person available to you on staff that will respond to social media in a more aligned practice. You know, the same type of response each time versus, you know, reacting to each thing as a new crisis. But, you know, doing things in a planned, organized way might be better. And that gets back to one of the original things I said. Part of your job is to support the superintendent with whatever tools he needs to run the district effectively. And sometimes that might be in communications, you know, often in the district, well, the principal's pretty good with the reporters or the principal has a good connection with the parents. Or maybe it's the superintendent, it just really has a good rapport with people. But if you really dig down, have they had any real professional development in public communications? That might be a tool that would be very effective for somebody that serves in that capacity. Do we offer that to our staff members that are in direct contact with the public or not? Something to think about and something to look at as part of the challenge of, of supporting a school district. Judy, you had your hand up earlier, I'm sorry, I just wanted to get.
No, no, that was, that was.
Click, it says some open queue, I wonder if I have to click on this.
That, that was perfect. So Mike is our spokesman with how we, how we are structured. And what we've done, I'm pretty proud of how we've handled ourselves before as a board. You know, we, we don't have inappropriate meetings. We have conversations, you know, oftentimes it would be the superintendent and board chair deciding, you know, how to respond. And I think a lot of times what the chair has done, while they're gathering information, is said, promised that they'll get back to them in writing so that they have the time to think about it and to write. And we've also, through the, through the years, we've dealt with all sorts of things. We, we did have a complaint about that we had a meeting and we didn't call the public back in. That was disproven by cameras, but none, nonetheless, we go out into the hallways and we have a special place and we, we call everybody. And, you know, after we come out of executive session. So those are, those are great points, thank you for bringing them up.
Well, interestingly enough, you know, it takes nothing to file an FOI complaint. You know, the, that's always on the front page of the local newspaper. Or if it's serious enough, it's on the front page of the Hartford Current. Or you might be a JI district down there, I'm not sure, they have a strange coverage. But the problem is when you're exonerated, if they did go to a hearing and they said, well, that's really ridiculous. It really didn't happen, that's always on the obituary page. So unfortunately, the, the harm was caused with the filing of the complaint versus the resolution of it. But you, you can't fix that stuff. But I, it sounds like you've got a good, that's really the best practice is for the superintendent and chair to work together and figure out strategies for this stuff. It requires the board members to trust that chair, but I, that should be part of that. I mean, you know, providing the resources necessary to help them with that if necessary. But that's a good practice.
I think, I think Nick, all of our chairs have been great and have really listened to individual board members if they had something to say on it as, as well.
Excellent, excellent, thank you. So that was my last actually. In terms of, and I'm going to see if I can, okay, it looks like I shut off my presentation, which is what I wanted to do. So, you know, this might be an opportunity to either share some questions or try to follow up on something I said earlier. Or, you know, how, what more could we do in terms of supporting you tonight to help you continue this conversation?
Nick, I'll, I'll add that, you know, all your, your points are excellent and critical for, you know, all board members to understand. One of the pieces that the RAM board historically has done very well is to codify much of, of, of the things that you've described in our current policies in terms of communication, in terms of when is it appropriate to meet? What, what should those look like? And, um, you know, I, I have found with very few exceptions that, and certainly I, I picked this up from being a high school principal, you know, my question, if somebody asked me a question. I didn't immediately know the answer to, I'd often. Follow up with, well, what does a student handbook say? And nine times out of 10, there's the answer. And I found that to be true with the board policies as well. You know, there, there's certainly been many questions I've asked, which I didn't have the answers on, on the tip of my tongue, but. Again, I think just about every time, um, the board policy has, has an answer to that. So the, the policies, the board has done a really nice job historically of, of maintaining it, you know, keeping policies active and current.
The, the other place that's important is there are times when a policy might not be appropriate for a particular issue, you know, you do the best, the best. Judgment of what you anticipate could happen and a policy tries to ward off any of those things from, from getting caught up. I was instrumental, and I say that carefully because it ended up blowing up in our faces, but. We had several kids caught with either BB guns or knives in school, and so we passed a policy that said, um, you know, mandatory expulsion. For any student caught, you know, caught with a weapon. And minimum 30 days, but again, that's all determined by hearing, all we could say was if the student was expelled or caught with it, they would. Face expulsion with a minimum 30 days expulsion if they were found to be guilty by that hearing. The superintendent, a couple of months later, came to the board and said, um, we have a dilemma and I need your guidance with this because. The policy says, you know, no tolerance, it's zero tolerance policy. We now have fifty fifth graders. I'm sorry, it might have been fifteen, I don't want to exaggerate too much, fifteen first, uh, fifth grade, fifth graders. Who went to a carnival over the weekend and one of the prizes they gave away was this little pocket knife. He says, frankly, you can't cut butter with these things, they're really not a dangerous weapon. But I've got fifteen kids, oh, look what I got on Saturday, you know, I won this, I, you know, nobody brought it with the intent to harm anyone, they were just being stupid. And he goes, do you really want us to bring fifteen expulsion hearings before the board? And of course, the answer was no. And so we had to, as a board that night, vote to set that policy aside for this particular issue. Because the superintendent couldn't unilaterally ignore the policy either, he had to come to the board and the board had to be the group to say. We will waive our policy because of the circumstances of this, leave it to administration to find an appropriate way to handle it. We then went back to our policy committee and rewrote the committee, the, the policy. To give more, um, I, I would say flexibility to the superintendent, you know, was there an intent to cause harm, was harm caused, et cetera, rather than just. Somebody being stupid and carrying a knife into the, into the school, so. We did a better job of serving our kids' needs when we did that the second time, but that would be an example where, you know, the, your staff is, well, same with you, you're all bound by policy. You can't just decide no, even board members adhere to policy unless you convince the rest of the board to set one aside for a particular reason. But I thought that might be an important little point to just throw out related to that.
Nick, I had one question, so I, I'm real comfortable in saying that.
It looks like you might have froze up, Mike.
I think. I'm sorry, can you hear me now or?
I can't hear you now, yep.
Sorry, my, my wifi is a little sketchy here. I think, uh, I'm really comfortable in saying that having gotten to meet the board members and hear their, you know, just get to know them a little bit, even the new ones. I'm really comfortable that everybody's there for the right reasons to try and do the right thing. That being said, what, what are some of the low hanging fruit, silly mistakes that new board members make? Me included, that, um, you know, drive problems like this, you, you talked about a few of them, but I'm, I'm going to have to believe there's probably a, a few others that are pretty low hanging fruit that you could share with us.
I actually have a whole PowerPoint that was actually the next part of what I was doing that talks about mistakes board members fake. Let me hit up just some of the, um, the, the. Ones that come to mind first, the first one is impatience. And particularly new board members, you want to do everything right away, you want to cause change, you want to fix things, you want to make a real impact on what goes on. And the reality is it takes time and, and it, it takes. Cooperation, you know, most people who serve on a school board have never served in public office before and you're used, I was a business owner, so I made decisions. Day in and day out, and I didn't have to go to a committee, I didn't have to go to a board. Or colleagues to, to make decisions, I needed a piece of equipment, I bought it, I needed to hire somebody, I did, if I could afford it. When I ran out of money, I couldn't go anywhere else, I was, I was where I was. But when you are put on a board and the first rule of order is let's build consensus, it's a very different place to be in some cases. And so sometimes board members, we are dealing with very emotional issues, we're dealing with things that have. Often some very strong personal feelings attached. And we sometimes get very emotional about it, and if we let too much of that show. With our colleagues, we might build some rifts between us that are hard to repair later. So we always want to be mindful of showing mutual respect, I think. Getting to know each other is a really good step in that direction, you know, respecting people for what they bring to the table. And we can agree to disagree, that's perfectly fine, as long as we can come at it from a level of mutual respect. That means sometimes that we have to be very careful on how we present things, you know, I really feel strongly that we should be doing this. But I'm not going to bludgeon people into going along with that, or I can't bully people into agreeing with that, I have to convince them. By, you know, being a credible leader, you know, being credible. Surprising the superintendent is another big one, you know, sometimes. The purpose of everything we're doing, you're voting on things, you're making decisions, we make decisions best when we learn something. We identify a problem that needs to be corrected. And then we work together to come up with a solution that makes the most sense, that's a cooperative collaborative process. I'd also say that boards often spend more time fighting over the solutions because they didn't spend enough time agreeing on what the problem is. So in, in terms of all board members. Let's refocus our attention on agreeing on what needs to be fixed versus. My solution is the best one for the problem that's in my mind versus your solution is the best solution for the problem that you're seeing. But we don't agree on what that is, so let's step back, not be immediately into finding a solution, but let's make sure. That we're, we actually all agree what the problem is, the same when setting goals. Do we all agree that if this goal passes the way it is, that this is what it means? When I was board chair, I tried to do that each time, and I'm sure you do something similar. You know, the motions made, seconded, we've had the discussion, it's time to vote, and I would typically say. Okay, before we vote, I just want to remind people that if this passes, this is what happens, and if it fails, this is what happens, just so that. Because once in a while, somebody might say, well, wait a minute, that's not what I thought. Okay, then let's make sure before we vote that we understand together, so that would be part of it. Once the board's made a decision, the board has made a decision, it's time to move on. You know, I was accused of that a couple of times early on in my career where. Well, frankly, the board chair refused to acknowledge me, we had a very contentious issue and I had a comment to make before I voted against the, the initiative. And the chair goes, well, we know what you think, and he wouldn't call on me, so I didn't get to speak. Why I was voting against it, so I did feel that it was my obligation to tell my community why I did that, so I wrote what I thought would be a letter to the editor in Hartford Current. And they made it an op ed, I had the whole bottom part of the page. I caught a lot of flack from my board over that because I. Was young and impulsive and I hadn't learned my lesson yet in terms of, I have to work with these people tomorrow, because I was still angry with them for what happened last night. And it got ugly for a while, I was right, by the way, but it didn't matter because I. In, in effect, got nothing passed for two years, other than one thing I voted against. Because I had alienated members of that board to the point where I had no respect from them. Part of that was my fault, part of it wasn't, but the results is exactly this, are exactly the same, I got nothing done. And that's a shame, because I think every board member has something to offer, every board member can add value to the conversation. We just have to figure out a way of making them feel welcome in doing that, and sometimes. They make it harder just in their own personalities, but you know what, that's our job to figure out how to make it them part of the team as well. Just behavior in general is, is something that board members sometimes do. One of my favorites is don't fall asleep during public comment. And I say that sort of tongue in cheek, but it's true. You remember, when someone addresses the board in public comment. They hate speaking public, public speaking is one of the biggest fears people have, it's usually number one on the list, number seven is death. So they're afraid to come to public speaking, even though it might just be you. And maybe a couple of administrators, maybe three or four other people in the audience. But they're there to speak in public, and nowadays when everything's televised, it's like. I'm, I'm scared to death, and so making them feel comfortable enough to be able to speak their truth. And what's bothering them or what they need your help with. Recognizing that maybe their request isn't something that you can even do or whatever, but showing the respect and showing those types of things, I think is very important. Focusing on student achievement, and I would say overall. This is what boards don't do effectively in many cases, I mean, you've heard of Lighthouse perhaps, the Lighthouse Project is a. Training program that Cabe is one of the states involved in, where we look at the behaviors and belief structures of. High achieving districts and how boards work in those districts and then help boards achieve those kinds of successes through the changes in their behavior. But. Oh gee, where was I going with that? The part of it is, what's that?
You were talking about student achievement and mistakes.
So what we find is when boards get sidetracked because they're not focused on student achievement. And we're focused on, um, you know, playgrounds or football fields or libraries or. We need solar on the roof, I mean, these things are all there to, that could potentially support our academic program. But the reason we exist is to make sure that each and every child comes out of your school with the skill set to succeed in life. And I, and lifelong learning, I mean, it's not just, I got a degree, I can get a job, but it's, I'm, I've learned skills that I can take to the future. Face it, you are all using as board members, you're using skills that you learned in high school and elementary school in terms of how to continue being learners. So how do we continue our focus on. Achievement when there are so many other distractions, you know, the killer bees, uh, books, buses, budgets. Buses, I mean, all of these things. They call them the killer bees because they can suck up all our energy when we really should be like. Do we have a world-class reading program or writing program, or do we have an exemplary music program? Where kids are succeeding at incredible levels? Do we spend our time on those kinds of conversations and, and what's important? So I, you know, I think there are some board chairs that I've seen around the state that I, I love their adherence to. It doesn't go on an agenda unless we can draw a link to student achievement. And again, sometimes there are statutory things, you have to do some things. But if you ask that question each time, if it's on the agenda, is it relevant to our work as a learning organization? If not, let's at least ask the question, does it have to be? And part of it might be, we spend an awful lot of time at our board meetings talking about this. There are boards that talk hours ad nauseam about field trips. You know, they have to approve every field trip. Well, I, I sat through a meeting once where they spent forty-five minutes approving seven field trips and each and everyone started the same way, every year we do this. So they were approving, they basically literally crossed the date out, put a new date in, and that was the, you know, save as, change the date on the document and there's their new report, their proposal. And the board had to discuss and vote on each and every one of those. And I went up to the chair afterwards and I said, how could you spend forty-five minutes on field trips? And she goes, what else could we have done? And my answer to her was, write a policy, what does a good field trip look like? Does it, you know, have an alignment with what's going on in class, is it part of what's being taught in the school? You know, whatever the purpose that we believe field trips should be, should be, you know, put into policy and then let your administrators make that decision. Some boards, a lot, most boards will draw the line and say, well, anything out of state or anything out of country, we want to see and we want to approve. I would argue that as long as the resources were available, you wouldn't even necessarily need to, as long as your policy identified. All the safety concerns that you have, because that's why you're going to say no. A few years ago, probably a lot more than that now, there was a, in Washington DC, there was that sniper incident a few years ago. Where people were just getting shot randomly all over the Washington DC area and a lot of school districts canceled their Washington field trip. Which, you know, everybody goes there every spring, but, um, you know. A policy could have said, if there's ever a situation where students could be going into harm, we don't go. Or maybe then it goes to the board, but, you know, but there's nothing wrong with saying, we want to see everything that's out of state or out of country. And if it required a shifting of funds because the money wasn't allocated for it, then obviously you may need to, but. That would be one example of where the board could do a better job of using policy to give direction. And you probably do in your district. But even New Haven, you know, as big as New Haven was, they had a subcommittee that met once a month only for field trips. And they approved every field trip. And they said, we know we shouldn't have to do this, what do we have to do to stop? And I said, get rid of the policy that says you have to. So that, that's, I, I, I just. If you think of your board meetings as a finite amount of time, your regular board meeting is the official meeting, I'm going to guess you have two a month. Two regular meetings, one, so even typically what, two hours, three hours?
We usually go from what, six thirty to, I would say, hmm, eight thirty, nine thirty.
Okay, so two hours, maybe a little more, so if you have one a month and it's two hours, that's twenty-four hours of meeting time over a year. And if I were to ask you, how many of those hours could be shown to be discussion of student achievement issues? The number may be high, may be low, but what I most always hear is not enough. And so we examine our, our agendas and look at, you know, how do they align to our goals, how do they align to our mission, how do they align to the expectations we have, our strategic plan? Do, do, it's great to actually link your agenda topics to your board goals where you can. Some, in fact, we have software that, you know, those boards that are part of our board meeting software. You can draw links between the agenda topics and the goals so that at the end of the year, you can say, well, we know we spent. We had six items on the agenda related to our first goal, none on goal two. Well, that says something about the way we work more than it does about our goals, perhaps. But it would cause me to say as a board member, if we have a goal and I'm assuming it's real important to us because it's a goal and we didn't have a single agenda item. For that entire year on that goal, then we either have to rethink the goal or we have to rethink our, our. Willingness to discuss it and work on it, or maybe we need to talk to the superintendent about how do we reprioritize it, you know, but. That would be an example where that could be information that's very valuable to you in terms of how are we doing as a board, are we being effective? I don't like the word efficient, efficient means we're interested in getting out at eleven o'clock or nine thirty or whatever that time might be. Whether we're done or not, effective means we got out at nine thirty, but man, look what we did while we were in the meeting. In my mind, that's a better use of your time. So those are just a couple, Mike, right off the top of my head. I don't know if there's any reaction.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
I think Judy had a question.
Judy?
No, I, I don't actually, I think this has been great and I'm thinking that I will rewatch this. Because I loved your history lesson for us.
Well, thank you.
Of course.
Yeah, I, I, for the new folks, I don't want to paint doom and gloom and, and frighten you. I still, it's been twenty-eight years, years since I was a board member and I miss it every day still. It was work that I found very fulfilling, very, very rewarding. Very frustrating at times, but you're doing the most important work in your community, I, I truly believe that and. You are affecting the lives of many, many, many people for the rest of their lives and, and how, that's a very noble job and. I want you to know that, you know, we're always available as a resource to you. Want to follow up with other kinds of meetings, board evaluation, for example, or just pick a topic and discuss it in more detail. I'm available for things like that, you can always call Cabe if you have questions. We have a couple of attorneys on staff that, you know, we can't be your lawyer. But most questions could be answered with, if we were, if we wanted to do this would be, would be, would we be okay or would we be in trouble? We get a lot of those calls, we like to think that we keep you from going that step where you might get in trouble. We'd rather get that call than the one, last night, we kind of did something and I want to make sure we, we were okay. Would rather get call one rather than call two, but we're there for you, we're, we want to be a resource and help you out any way we can.
Great. So Scott, at this point, do we need to do a, a vote to adjourn?
Yep, I think we're set. Nick, again, thank you so much for, for spending the time with the board and again, I, I will share the recording with the entire board, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes, to see it.
Really appreciate your.
Thank you.
Sign off now, have a good night.
Okay.
With that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry. A second.
Okay, Lori, so Lori made a motion to adjourn and Judy seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? The ayes have it. Scott, do we need to do anything else?
We are all good, we are. I'm going to stop. Thank you everyone for joining.
Yeah, that was great.
Yeah.
Good night.
Good night, take care.